Okay, well, good evening. Excuse me, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, May 11th. Regular meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. I'm gonna read in a bridge version of this, but in keeping with the ongoing emergency order from Governor Charlie Baker to limit gatherings and maximize social distancing. And under legislation passed to address remote board meetings during the emergency declaration, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board slash commission members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards a quorum. The meeting will be available on ECAT. So first, to ensure we have a quorum, I will take a roll call. Greg Strange here.
Robert Stetson here.
Everybody chime in? Yes. Okay, so. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public can be recognized by using the raised hand function on Zoom or make a request with the Q and A function. If you are joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. If an applicant wishes to display materials, please make the request of the chair and email the materials to the board staff for sharing on screen. When starting testimony, please state your name and address for the record. The rest of the instructions and information on Zoom are posted on the agenda, which I feel this is our third or fourth meeting, so I don't have to go through that now. And just in case there are people there, we will be continued at the 560 Founder Street Sawmill Village. We will be continuing that public hearing to our next meeting or two meetings out to be determined. We are also going to. We received a request to continue public hearing for 58 Mill Street to May 26th. And those are our continuances. I just don't want anybody hanging online. So would someone like to make a motion to continue those two? Sawmill Village and 58.
For Sawmill, we're gonna continue that to June. When they asked to, they actually asked to be continued to June 22nd, but I believe they met June 15th because that's the actual second June meeting and the one that is after their June 8th Concom hearing.
Motion to continue, motion to continue public hearing on Sawmill Village to June 15th.
Second.
All those in favor? Strange, I.
That's an I.
Yes, an I.
Sounds like we got everybody. And.
I'll make a motion to continue 58 Mill Street and 5 Owl Ridge Road until May 26th.
Second.
All those in favor? Strange, I.
Stetson, I.
Anderson, I.
Val Sarah, I.
Welcome, Deb. I don't see you up there, but I hear you.
Almost it looks like you were muted as well.
All right, um, so 418 Depot Streets.
Right.
Special permit.
I'm gonna let Frank Rieblin in here.
Hey, Imai.
Frank, if you can hear me, will you tell me if I need to let anyone else in?
Ah, never mind.
Anyone else to be let in at the moment?
Sorry, I can.
I'm good. I'm all, I found what I needed.
Okay.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I do not believe there's anyone else that needs to be let in at this time.
Okay.
So Frank, will you just.
Plans up here?
Frank, can we just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, I am Frank Rieblin from Rieblin-Lance of theirs, representing the 418 Depot Street project. We have applied for an A and R plan endorsement as well as an estate lot special permit and a common driveway special permit.
Welcome. There's Deb. Hi, Deb. Um, so Frank, do you, it's been a while on this one. Do you wanna kind of circle back and then bring us up to date?
Certainly. At the previous planning board meeting, which was several months back now, the board requested several items. One, they wanted to see some approximate proposed topography and the locations of the proposed homes on the two new lots. And the fire department had several requests for safety concerns. I believe we have addressed those items. The revised plan, the topographic plan. And I see you do not have the newer one up there now, the revised plan. There was a revised.
Here it is.
There you go. That shows the location of the two new proposed homes with grading as well as the driveways, and both of them have leaching areas situated to the south side of the home. The fire department had several requests that I believe we have addressed. One was that the driveway should have a minimum width of 16 feet. The driveway is close to that now, but not quite, so we have added a note on the plan. And that is note 13. And we're stating on that note that the existing gravel driveway should be graded to provide a minimum 16-foot wide travel surface with a minimum 13.5-foot vertical clearance. At no point shall the driveway slope exceed 10%. Those last two items were also points that the fire department had requested that we have a vertical clearance of at least 13 and a half feet and a slope no greater than 10%. I will point out that this property is rather mild topographic changes and there's no place on the site near the driveway that would exceed the 10% anyway. The fire department also requested that homes situated more than 250 feet from the road be equipped with sprinkler systems. We do not believe that this is a requirement that falls within the current zoning regulations, but may fall within the building inspector's purview. So we would respectfully request that that be omitted from this decision and allow for the building inspector to make that decision when the permits are actually applied for. The planning or excuse me, the fire department also requested that we have a turnaround at the end of the road sufficient for fire apparatus. We have shown the existing parking turning area that is currently up there at the existing dwelling to be improved into the T-shaped configuration that is in compliance with the current zoning regulations or current, excuse me, subdivision rules and regulations. I believe that we have now satisfied all the concerns and requirements of the fire department as well as the previous request of the planning board.
Frank, what is the total length of the driveway?
Give me one second and I will give you that information.
Because I couldn't see, it seems like there's a dimension missing on one of the radii, so I couldn't figure it out.
Approximately 650 feet.
Okay, and that's to the property line of Lot 3?
That would be to the, to the existing dwelling that's back in there. Both of the new dwellings would be closer to Depot Street than the existing dwelling.
Okay, and Imai, you had so showed me a letter from the fire department, which I, did it have more requests on it?
It did not have more requests on it. It just reiterated the concerns they had stated before. Which is here, I have this up on screen now.
So. Okay, so. We have had, as you guys may recall, going back to earlier this year. The fire department had started to, for the first time, had started to request that we require houses over 250 feet to be sprinkled and driveways that were over, I believe, 125 feet to have a turnaround of some type. And at that time, I had explained to Andrea Langhauser, who was the acting Director of Planning, that for as long as I had been on this board, it had always been 500 feet where the sprinklers had been required, but more importantly, that really being on the inside of the house wasn't part of our purview. I didn't recall we'd ever put that in a decision and it seemingly had just always been handled between applicant engineer in the buildings department during the, during the permitting phase. I also mentioned that I'd be more than willing, once we had a new director of planning in place, to sit with the fire chief and anybody on his staff. Obviously, that hasn't happened with, with the COVID crisis. But, so that said, so looking at, so I just wanna be clear on a couple of things. Our current bylaw, under common driveway, calls for, says the distance shall not exceed 500 feet unless the planning board determines said driveway has a safe and reliable access for fire, police, and other emergency vehicles. That's it. That's Section 235-32. So I know, okay, so this existing driveway is 630, I think Frank said. And then it calls for a minimum cleared width of 18 feet, a minimum travel width of 12 feet. And that the surface needs to be a minimum four inches of gravel and work with existing grading and not change existing grade plane, not grade, not change existing drainage patterns. So this, when I saw this letter today for the first time, this, oh, this was the, whoa, we just lost it. Can I have that letter back? Cause that was on the screen? Anybody? Did you guys all lose that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we lost it.
Well, anyways, so the first, well, telecom, so the first item on that talks about a preferably paved, preferably paved driveway. I guess my only concern is, and I, all due respect to the fire department and, you know, and I mentioned this to Imai, I'm certainly willing, you know, to sit down. What happens, you know, here at planning board, we have to deal with lots of things, not only the fire department. So, you know, the police department, conservation commission, historical commissions. And you guys will know, there's many instances where conservation may have an issue with a driveway being paved. Or, you know, and I can't recall, you know, we have that, that item that I brought up about Section B-1 that says distance shall not exceed 500 feet. But this is an existing driveway. And I, and I know when Mr. Rieblin was last before us, which I guess was October, maybe November, it was a while ago. I don't recall, and we didn't have any feedback at the time that I knew of requesting that it be paved. So just personally, I'm a little hesitant to, you know, suddenly require 600 feet of pavement. Going back to with what we've done in the past, driveways need to be maintained. It's all spelled out in the bylaw. But, you know, many, many times we've approved gravel driveway, so I just, so I just kind of throw that out to everybody. And, and I still, even if we end up changing, you know, our bylaw calls out, you know, a lot of maximum lengths at 500 feet. I think that's why it always, after 500 feet, until very recently, after 500 feet is when they would want sprinklers. But I don't recall an instance where we've ever put that in a decision and I would, I would really be hesitant to do that because I don't think the inside of the dwelling is our, is under our purview. Not that we can't have a discussion with other boards in town about this, but having not had said discussion, I just am a little hesitant. So I'll throw that just out to you guys for any thoughts, comments.
Greg, I, the, the letter here is using the word preferably.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't say it has to be.
Correct.
But then, then the second part of that sentence says, the gravel driveway that is present does not meet the guideline. So it's not because the gravel as it is, and I haven't seen it, is need to be repaired and redone? And i- is this a plan to redo that? So it meets the requirement as a gravel driveway?
Well, this, so this memo that we're looking at is from the fire department and I'm not familiar with any guidelines that he's referring to. I'm not saying they don't exist. I just don't know them. You know, we're the zoning board, planning and zoning board, so we go by the plan, we go by the zoning bylaws and the rules and regs, published rules and regs of the planning board. So.
Is there anything that says what type of gravel driveway will meet the requirement somewhere?
Well, yeah, let me grab the code. So. Let me, I'll read this to you quickly. Bear with me here for a second.
Looking that up, one comment I wanted to make was, I think last time we talked about this, we were looking at the overall distance to the house on Lot 2 because there was no house on the property. It could potentially have been shown with a driveway longer than 500 feet, but based off of this drawing, it would appear to be that it's under that. Frank, do you have a dimension of that?
The house is approximately 400 feet from Depot Street on Lot 2.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is, yeah, good, good question, Chris. Good point. You have, you have a better memory than I, but you have age on your side. So this is chapter 235-32, common driveways. Under the distance of common driveway measured from the street line to the point where any principal building is proposed shall not exceed a distance of 500 feet. So to Chris's point, the new, the new houses don't meet that or don't exceed that. However, we're looking at a common driver that's serving, you know, it's a gray area. It's serving an existing dwelling, which has had a gravel driveway. Common driveway should be, let's see, all right, a minimum cleared width of 18 feet and a minimum travel way of 12 feet shall be maintained. Now, I'm not saying that to, to disagree with what the fire captain has sent in, just to, you know, we can, these, just so these are recent changes. So if that's how we want to do it for now, then that's fine, but we just need, it's in the bylaw. We need to go through a bylaw change, but I don't, you know, I don't see any issue persuading applicants, you know, to do this unless, you know, unless geography is an issue. But roadway, and then, so here's the main line. A roadway surface of a minimum of four inches of graded gravel placed over a properly prepared base, graded and compacted to drain from the crown shall be installed. Where the property rises in elevation from the street, the driveway shall be paved from the street to the first high point, breaking grade, in order to prevent erosion toward the street, except where such paving is prohibited by other town bylaws. And then it talks about exceeding, the public, talks about 8% slopes, 20 feet, you know, drain, then shall not, the common driveway shall not disrupt existing drainage patterns. A grading and sloping plain showing existing proposed conditions shall be submitted with a special permit application. So that's, yeah, so that's, that's what it, that's all the detail in terms of the construction of the driveway.
So if I summarize that, according to the bylaws, the length of this is such that a common driveway is permitted. And according to the bylaws, there is instructions or design instructions, if you, if you will, about how the driveway should be constructed. And this is an old driveway that does not have that, those specifications for, for the way it needs to be. They need to fix this. So the question is, the question is, as part of this presentation of the plan, is intention to fix that driveway so it meets the bylaw?
Yes, that would be, I mean, that was asked at the last meeting and I think it's inferred by the plans, but it would certainly be part of any decision that we issue, just for clarity.
And Mr. Rieblin, how far is the nearest fire hydrant for the, from the entrance?
There is a fire hydrant down at School Street. I don't have that exact dimension.
Couple hundred feet at least, right?
It, it's within a reasonable distance, 300 or 400 feet down at School Street.
Yeah, so, you know, to Peter's point, I think that even absent this letter from the, from the fire department, practice in Eastern has been, when a permit is applied for, building permit is applied for, the fire department, given the length of the driveway and depending on the, you know, the location of the closest hydrant, often will issue requirements for interior sprinklers, but it's always been the practice, again, because playing where we don't have purview inside a structure, that's why we've never dipped our toe in the water, if you will.
Yeah, so the trigger for the fire department review of the actual building is the building permit, at which point they will.
Correct.
Look into any requirements they might have.
Yeah.
Building the new structures.
And, and I spoke to Imai, since there seems to be on the part of the fire department, a desire to maybe change how we're doing things, certainly willing to, like I said, you know, have a conversation. I just wanna make sure we stay within our, you know, our duties. I just don't know, you know, I don't wanna stretch our scope. We're not allowed, so we don't have legal issues. But we can, you know, whenever we're actually able to, we can certainly take a look. But it's a bigger question because you know, if you look at this plan, for example, the driveway goes right through the 100-foot buffer. And, you know, it's always been the case that conservation has been much happier with, with a gravel driveway than a, than paved driveway. You know, in fact, they, many times they wouldn't allow paved driveway here. Or, or they would allow purvious pavement, which, once it's not vacuumed after three months, it's gonna act just like gravel anyways. That's been driven over, so.
Yeah, I, I think a paved driveway opens a little kind of warm here.
A paved driveway is what?
It would open it kind of warm about.
Right, right, sure. Well, and then you also bring up the issue, you know, when you think of it, one of the, you know, with the bylaw, that section that I read where it talks about not to, to disturb existing drainage patterns. So what that really means is your driveway really needs to sort of enjolade with the existing grading. And think about it, soil, you know, dirt, gravel, it's gonna go up and down with, with frost and other things. And, you know, if you were to engineer a driveway, which is, you know, it's like this, it's a small road, it's really not possible to, to do it. Well, it's, it's possible, you, you wouldn't wanna pave a driveway that doesn't, that, that follows the exact drainage patterns because it's gonna blow apart in a year or two with, because of frost thaves. You know, you, you, you would do a paved driveway, you would build much differently than a gravel driveway.
So as a general practice for common driveways, it could be reasonable to, to, in the decision, require a certain level of maintenance for emergency access?
Yes, yeah, I think if we went back to, I think we have some standard sort of cut and paste things in there to maintain clear distances, heights, and, and there's especially the gravel base. And we'll, I made a note as we were talking, and we'll circle back and make sure we do that, but I'm pretty sure that's been the practice.
Greg, is that part of our motion, these details? Or we, if we were to approve this, we don't need to mention that because it's.
No, no, we, hey, the more, the more the merrier, because then we, the more hands on deck, the less we forget. I thought that was gonna rhyme better, sorry.
And if we could go back to the practice of the board on reviewing this decision before we have them in front of us to sign, that would be, I mean, it's okay if they're the other same day, but we should hopefully be able to review it.
Yeah, no, and I, one of the first things I told Imai when he came on board, I said, is write the, you know, that was, that was just a very brief detour. And, you know, typically, the, the, right, we review, you know, I, I, I'll review the decision or edit it sometimes, help write it. And then we get it to the board, you know, we'll sign nothing that we haven't seen. No more blank, we're not gonna do what happened earlier this year. Frank, do you have anything else to add or Imai?
Again, I would like to point out that on the topographic sheet that you've got on the board in front of you, I did add notes 13, 14, and 15. All three of those notes pertain to the construction and maintenance of the driveway. And I believe they pretty well cover most of what you were discussing.
Okay, yep. Imai, do you have anything to add?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Okay.
Someone's eating.
I did that beforehand, so.
I'm just teasing.
I would have, I would have turned off my camera if I was doing that. Um, let's see here, so looking at this as an estate lot as well, what I just wanted to look at, I believe there's. There'll be some, I'm just looking at the existing drainage pattern shall not be disrupted, okay, by construction of a new driveway. So, yeah, I think this is all right. I wanted to, if we needed to take a look at the proposed grading of the house, I wanted us to, you know, take some time to do that. But I believe that this is, the draining patterns are again, like they talk about with a common driveway. It's the, don't disrupt the drainage patterns for that, for the driveway.
Right.
What about, what about, I, I can't read it. So what about the details about the specs, about what the, how the driveway should be from the point of view of the depth and the different type of material, the compaction, et cetera?
I don't think we get into details of that beyond, you know, beyond what Greg read. The, the gravel with a, with a compacted base and that's about the minimum it allows in 10% grade. That's what's specified. It doesn't say anything else as terms of, you know, materials, cross slopes, or any other, you know, you know, specifications that matter. It doesn't get that detailed in the zoning bylaw.
So the answer to my question, it is conform to the bylaws?
Yes.
Yeah.
And is the pavement, the pavement in the front section, is that called out in this plan? I know, so it's not, so is that something that we're expecting to see on this driveway?
There is no proposed paving on the driveway.
Right. Was there, in what Greg read, was there a mention of pavement for a first length of the driveway to prevent erosion? Or was that?
I think that's if it slopes down toward the road and this slopes away from the road.
Okay, so that's not an issue.
Do we have an idea, an approximation of the grade percent slope there at all?
Frank, you touched on that, didn't you?
It, yes, it's gonna be less than 2% throughout the entire run of the driveway.
Trying to estimate this here from the 108 to 109, but it's pretty.
Yeah, I mean, if you drive by, you can see the front, it's really, at that point, it's mental.
It's, it's very flat.
Yeah.
I, I look.
Doesn't look like much.
Yeah, I drive, I drove by and look in and it looked very flat.
And, and Peter, just to answer your question, it took me a while to zoom in, but the, the street where the driveway intersects is, I'll interpolate, it's about 109 and a third, I'd say 109.3. And you can see the first existing grade and the proposed grade of the driveway is 108. So that's what shows how it slopes down.
Yeah.
And the reason for the pavement is if it slopes down to the street, I should say.
Yeah, doesn't create a.
So you don't have, so you don't have gravel washing into the road, but it's going the other way. And just, so I was just noticing an email I got from Suzanne. Wow, we, we met on this on January 13th, it seems so much longer ago. The board members who sat in on this, thus our. The board members who sat in on this, thus our eligible, unless you have all watched the video, Strange, Deshane, Stetson, and Anderson. Wondering if we get to a, and do we have anybody in the public that wanted to chime in? I, I can't tell on my end if we have anybody.
Let me see if anybody is raising their hand. Wants to talk on this. I don't see anyone who's raised their hand, or let me see if anybody's put in, uh, nothing in the Q and A.
Okay.
I will make a motion to close the public hearings, like hearings.
Frank, are you okay with us closing the public hearing?
Yes, I am.
Hearings. Is there a second?
Second.
And this is for both. All those in favor, Strange, I.
Stetson, I.
Deshane, I.
And Suzanne, I'm assuming that since you didn't read my name off the list, and I haven't signed the Mullen report, that I will just abstain?
Correct.
You can vote to, you can vote to close. Come on, you showed up, come on. Give me your money.
Motion to approve the special permit.
Second.
For four eighteen Depot Street.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Strange, I.
Stetson, I.
Deshane, I.
Kevin, I.
Motion to approve the, oh, sorry, I was looking at site plan for another project, that's done.
Right.
Anderson, did you vote on that last one?
Anderson, I, yep, sorry, muted.
And then Deb and Amos abstained, right?
Okay.
All right, um, so, Mr. Riedland, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Do we need to continue Founder Street?
Yeah.
Motion to continue five sixty thou, oh.
We did that already.
Yeah, we did that already.
I'm going backwards. All right, Greg, you take over.
Owl.
We did those ones as well.
Oh, we did those as well too? Sorry, thought we just did the
Three seventy.
Owl Ridge, we did, yeah, so now we have
Three seventy we didn't do.
Public hearing, so, oh, just, so, who has the notice to read? Peter, do you have it?
I do.
Oh, look at that, I am impressed. I don't even have those secret documents.
Need to escape out of this.
So this is three seventy.
Town of Eastern Notice of Public Hearing, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one dash T M G L, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on May eleventh, two thousand twenty at six thirty P M. To be held remotely on the application received from three seventy Chase Center Street LLC for a special permit duplex dwelling under Eastern Town Code two thirty-five zoning attachment one, Appendix A, a table of use regulations, A two, to allow the creation of a duplex dwelling at three seventy Center Street, Eastern Massachusetts. Assessors map thirty-five U Lot eleven. The meeting will be conducted remotely using Zoom technology. The virtual meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. A copy of the application and plan may be inspected on the town website for three seventy Center Street, Special Permit Duplex twenty dash one eighty. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org. Gregory Strange, Chair.
Thank you. So this, we are going to be continuing as we did not receive the updated documents. So we'll continue this to our next meeting, which is May twenty-sixth. So Imai lost his internet, he just told me, so, okay. Suzanne, are you still there? Oh, Imai's there.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so someone want to just make a motion to continue this to the May twenty-sixth?
Motion to continue May twenty-second for
Six.
Second, anybody?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Strange, I.
Stetson, I.
Anderson, I.
Val Sarah, I.
All right, now we're going to read another one and continue it immediately for thirty-eighth Center Street. Peter, you have that?
Did, was there a mention before the meeting that we might not open this, so that we don't have to, because they had to go through another different process? Or should we just open that?
But I thought we agreed, because they don't, they didn't want to advertise again, Imai, right? Did I understand that? Correct.
Oh, let's just open that.
Imai, can you hear me?
Yep, okay, sorry, I'm back now.
That was right, so thirty, thirty-eight Center, we are going to open it and continue it, just so they don't have to re-advertise, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yours, Peter.
Eastern Notice of Public Hearing, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one dash T M G L, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on May eleventh, two thousand twenty at six thirty P M. To be held remotely on the application received from Stephen and Lindsay Monahan for a special permit mixed use under Eastern Town Code, Chapter two thirty-five zoning, attachment one, Appendix A, Table of Use Regulations, A five mixed use to allow the interior renovation for office use and residential use located at thirty-eight Center Street, Eastern Massachusetts, Assessors Map sixteen U Lot one oh nine. Instructions for accessing this remote hearing will be provided on the associated agenda available at least forty-eight hours prior to the hearing on the Town of Eastern's website pursuant to government Charlie Baker's executive order on open meeting law of March twelfth, two thousand twenty, suspending certain provisions of open meeting law thirty A twenty. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org. Gregory Strange, Chair.
Thank you. And we'll continue this out to the twenty-fifth for now, uh, twenty-sixth, sorry.
Make a motion to continue the
Oh, actually, sorry, thirty-eighth Center, we should continue out to to the fifteenth as well, because they're going to, they're the ones that are going to have to go before the zoning board of appeals, so that's at least till the June fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-eighth Center Street to June fifteenth.
Second.
Could you just, just explain that the variance that they need just quickly, so that we're all sort of up to speed on that?
Yep. So the variance they need is they are right now applying for a mixed use for a commercial real estate management, or not, a real estate management office, that's their commercial use. And then they are applying for, for uh, for dwelling units in the mixed use. Basically, two on the bottom, two on the top. I believe right now there are, by building permit records, I believe there are three in, in the under the current use. Further form, the current use has been abandoned, but it has been abandoned, so they not have a, a grandfathering for those, even those three units. So in that case, they do need to make to, at least if they're going to propose that number of units, get a variance and get it possibly affirmed that, you know, that they can have that grandfathering through a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
So as long as we're talking, I'm so curious, how does that, and I'll take it, I'll take it off of this property in particular, but for our planner and our lawyer on the board. So if you, let's say you have a building in this case, and this is the old, this is the old funeral home. Which, I remember I toured it when it first went on the market, and I thought there was two units, the building's huge, but so, let's say, a building permit show, they, I guess, three units, right, but it was never but if it never went through a process of, you know, a planning board process or a CBA process. And let's say, and I know it's been more than two years, so they've abandoned it, but would you get that by, by right? I mean, are you sort of grandfathered in, even though you didn't go through a legal process?
Yes, in short, yeah. But you have to continue it. Our bylaw says, the, the laws, the uses, if, if legally existing, assumes, you know, because of the age of the building, that these, that these units were all legally existing. Then, yes, you get to, if they could continue those, those uses. You know, and again, assuming it was legitimately three units, continue three units, and likely some kind of commercial use, subject to the finding that the commercial use is you know, similar enough in, in nature to the existing one there. But usually grandfathering extinguishes after two years, and that's what it says in the bylaw. However, they can get that grandfathering back with a special permit.
But say, Imai, where, where is, where is that limitation? This is just a question, where is that two-year limitation?
So let me just check here, it's, I think it's under, I just read it, non-conforming uses. Going to thirty-five twenty. So two, let me see. Uh, two thirty-five twenty-four. Non-conforming use or structure which has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years will lose protected status and should be subject to all provisions of the zoning bylaw pro, provided. However, that by special permit, the zoning board of appeals may reestablish a non-conforming use or structure, otherwise abandoned or not used.
You know, it's interesting too, because this, if I, this is the first time I've seen this plan. Now, this shows three units, right? But if you look on, and I know you said they had three, but this was a funeral home, and I, I did a few funeral homes, so I know in a few funerals I know at least that front half of that first floor. Or is that all second floor? I can't tell with the pink box.
So what they have here, first floor, they have divided into two units here.
Right.
Um, basically, one kind of in the back and one off the front. And then we, we only have a partial plan of the second floor. Um, but they did tell me that, you know, they have right down at the bottom of, of the first plan, it says entry for units one and four. Unit four is staying the same as it, as it was. And so they didn't put on the plan.
Okay, yeah, you, because unit four was pretty much the entire second floor, if I recall, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
But I did ask them to now put that on the plan, since they are, you know, going for more units.
Right. Yeah, I, I thought the whole first floor was a funeral home, but anyways, that's neither here nor there. So so we, did we, do we have, I guess we had a second, did we ever make, no, we didn't make the motion.
Well, we did get a question from the public too, if we want to address this. Do they want the dwellings to be apartments or condos? And I don't know the answer to that. Not sure that it matters.
Are you asking us?
Uh, no, this was a question from the public.
Oh.
Came up on the Q and A. From R Walsh.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that answer.
Yeah. I, I don't either, and I, I don't believe it, it matters for our purposes either.
But they'll be going before the Board of Appeals, which will be a public hearing, and that will have public
Yes.
Put available, and then go through that process, and they'll come to us for a site plan review, which would also have public comments, so plenty of chances, whoever's interested just needs to keep track of what's happening.
Correct, correct.
Absolutely. All right, um, so we had a motion to continue, we had a second. Is there any further discussion? Any more public comments? You clear, Imai?
I'm good.
All right, all those in favor, Strange, I.
Stetson, I.
Deshane, I.
Anderson, I.
Val Sarah, I.
All right. So our next, we're going to get out of here quick tonight, so our next item was a list of proposed zoning amendments with a vote to hold public hearings. Of course, that was in anticipation of a June twenty-second town meeting. However, we learned after the agenda went out that the Board of Selectmen have requested that if there is a town meeting on the twenty-second of June, that it be only budget items. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Imai, but I think the game plan is, assuming there is one on the twenty-second, which is a big assumption, but if it does go down that perhaps in later in summer, maybe in August, there would be a second town meeting to handle your non-budget items such as zoning. Failing, failing that to happen, then perhaps there'll be a, a special town meeting, you know, as there is every year. So obviously, it's a pretty unusual and fluid situation. And, but I, I, you know, I, I certainly understand why we're not going to handle zoning issues right now.
Yeah.
But, and, and just to that point, I know we had a spirited debate at our last Zoom meeting regarding zoning. And Bob and myself and Imai held a conference call last, last week, right, yeah. And it was a good call, and I, I think Bob and I you know, were, were, it was said at that meeting, and I think I'd agree, we're, we're closer on things than we are further apart, so I think we can you know, we'll continue to, in a legal way, publicly work out our, our differences, and, and I think I'll talk to Imai, but we'll, we'll jump back into the zoning. You know, maybe in a meeting or two, just to, you know, we had it, we're pretty close, and might as well, you know, maybe we'll throw there were a couple of questions, scenarios I threw out to, at the meeting to, to kind of look at, to kind of get an idea, so. And I know I started to actually get some calls and emails in the last couple of days from folks in the neighborhood who have noticed what's been posted online. So at some point, we'll, we'll probably jump back in, just so we can wrap it up and, and have some public comment, but not tonight. Anything to add to that, Imai?
Um, no, that, that pretty much hits it, you know, we, we have you know, was doing this in anticipation, kind of as a more just in case we did go forward on, on June twenty-second with a meeting. But it's become pretty clear that we're not, so we may, there's a, there's no need to, need to hold the, the meeting now, hearing now.
All right, so now, Board Business vote authorizing Planning and Development Director to be a designated signatory.
Yep. Uh, so what this is, is if you recall, at our last meeting, we did talk about that I would, that we would do electronic signatures. The other part of that, that still needed addressing, and this has been a, this has been a discussion kind of with our municipal lawyers and just other planners for a while, is when we talk about subdivision of land, all the things that come under Chapter eighty-one, that actually, we do need a vote for you folks, from you folks, and a specific authorization that we file with the registry for me or any one of you to be a designated signatory for an A and R plan, or an approved definitive subdivision plan. But all of those things that my laws, that normally all of you sign, which now is easier for just one of us, namely me, to sign, we need to vote to make that happen.
Right.
That's what it is, in short.
Any questions?
Is this, this is a one-time vote, or is this something that gets done each time, Imai?
One-time vote.
Okay.
And then, and then, then we vote to end it when, when we're back to normal?
When we're back, yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the electronic signature by the town planner.
Can I have discussion out there?
I, I have a question, what is the mechanism by which we are going to approve for signature?
Well, still vote like we always do, but just in, in lieu of us being able to physically sign, Imai will electronically sign.
Okay, so nothing, nothing goes back and forward electronically in order to do.
Correct.
No.
So then on this special permit, oh, sorry, on a, on a special permit decision, does, does Suzanne notarize his signature on behalf of the board?
Uh, no, for a special permit decision, what we'll do is, like for the next for four eighteen Depot, like what we just approved, you folks will review it, vote on it, and I will sign it on behalf of you folks as well, and sign it electronically. Don't need a vote to do that.
Yes.
We don't need a registered document like we have here.
I was just wondering how it works, does, is your signature notarized because you are signing on behalf of us?
Uh, no, it doesn't have to be notarized.
Oh, okay.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, Strange. Hearing none, all those in favor, strange eye.
Strange eye.
Stetson eye.
Anderson eye.
Val Sarah guy.
Kevin, I.
All right, um, board signatures. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna tape some paper onto my car. And everybody have a Sharpie. And a face mask. Nitrate gloves.
Yeah.
And a small cheese pizza that you can leave in the back like that.
Small only? Go for the large.
There'll be like five pizzas. Um, so, yep, looks like a plan. Last one a long time ago.
Uh, this, yeah, this is, this is one I think that actually had been, like, came in just as the, you know, all processes stopped. Um, and then was at, then went up for a, um, went in for a building permit, and, you know, then we all kind of realized, oh, wait, we didn't, this hasn't been signed. Um, so this is seven Glen Road, uh, subdivision, which I believe was approved, and also went through, um, was EBA for, uh, related variants, I believe, but basically, you know, done here, and again, should we, should you guys say, yes, these are the plans? I go ahead and, after we get that, um, previous document filed with the registry, I go ahead and sign these and send it in.
So, I, so I have one question, I had heard, um, that this property, um, was going through some drastic changes at conservation. Do you know anything about that, or is that?
I do not know anything.
A vicious rumor, or, I mean, I guess if, they, they would come back to us if they changed something on the road.
Yes.
Right, so.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, they, they would, they would have to, um.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly approve, this is the plan that we approved, you, you might want to just.
I mean, that's, that's basically it, this is, this is the one that was approved, so.
Okay. Um, sure. Let's, let's go to best memory.
Imai, your question is if you want to send this plan to us, review and get, uh, an answer via email, or you want an answer now?
I was hoping for an answer now, but if you're more comfortable with it via email, we can, I mean, we can definitely make that a, the process.
I, I, I reviewed this several times, and I actually changed several times. Uh, I'm, I'm comfortable approving, uh.
Okay.
So should I just make a motion?
Motion to approve the plan.
Motion to approve the plan and let, uh, Imai sign, okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, strange eye.
Stetson eye.
Anderson eye.
Val Sarah guy.
All right. Um, next we had a division of land at Center Street and Gary Lane.
Yep, uh, this was an estate lot, um.
Wow, this is a real old one.
Special permit. And I believe now they are looking to, or are selling lot three, the estate lot.
Yeah, can you, could you zoom in for a second?
Yep.
Please? Um.
This is now something Gary Lane, like twelve or.
So they not let this sign, we never signed this, because they didn't want to file it until they had something happening?
Um, basically, I don't think this has been assigned a new address yet.
Well, I thought that was gonna be an unbuildable, wasn't that deeded differently or something?
What was the last day we looked at this?
Oh, it was like a year ago, this is when Bill Humphries were working on doing, um, that duplex idea.
Yeah, it could have been around the spring, but.
Didn't happen.
Yeah, I can check that out.
I don't remember this.
My only concern
Yes.
would be, so this lot three, not the time, so we, we had worked for quite a while with Mr. Humphries on an idea, if you remember lots, uh, we're gonna have, um, duplexes on them. And I thought, at one point, this portion was gonna be deeded green space. Now, our project didn't go through, but I'm not, no, I just, I, I, I'm not comfortable signing this one yet, because I wanna go back and compare that to another plan.
Okay.
Make sure it is what we approved, because I thought it was, I just thought it was denoted a little differently. So this is, we're just tidying up paperwork, right? We're not holding anything up, are we?
I, um.
Yeah, I just said that, you know, I'd make a motion that upon, uh, um, you know, positive endorsement by the, the planning director and the chair, that, um, that we approve it and, and, you know, that we sign it. That way.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
That way we don't have to wait two weeks.
Yeah.
Sure.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Uh, I heard a second, all right, all those in favor? Strange eye.
Stetson eye.
June fourteenth, twenty eighteen.
Anderson eye.
Val Sarah guy.
Did you just hear a random voice kick in? What was that?
No.
And someone, that was, this screen just went across and someone yelled the date out.
I think it was Chris.
What's that?
Oh, that, that was me, that was, I said, I, I had found an old staff report for it, it was like June of twenty eighteen, when this.
Yeah, this is a long time, this is a long.
For this was done.
Two years.
Um, ta 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 ta, uh, oh, meeting minutes.
Hmm.
Anybody?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Second.
Okay.
I think I heard a second in there, did I hear a second?
I did second.
All right, um, all those in favor, strange eye.
You're saying I.
Anderson eye.
Stetson eye.
Val Sarah, I'll abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, guys, next time, at our next meeting, I think we should have a little competition, uh, for the most creative backdrop, because pretty, pretty ho-hum when I've been looking at for the last hour, so.
There you go. Peter's.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna give us some mind moves.
Peter's gonna vote by, by Morse code doing that.
Uh, yeah, exactly. He said, he said.
Two for I, one for no.
He's doing, he's doing.
Blinds, yeah.
It was like on the old warships, remember what they used to do, right? Morse code with that, what was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, plus it's time, um, for Greg to update his, his, uh, arrangement back there. I noticed you took the rabbit.
I'm not in charge of arrangements, you, you can talk to the boss for that.
I noticed you took the rabbit away, but I don't.
Yeah, we, we ate the rabbit. He was made of chocolate.
I might need to go to Chris's underground, um, barber shop, wherever that is.
Yeah, pretty soon, like, I had longer hair last year, but. It's, um, I'm, uh, I just cooked my fifty-fourth, uh, independent meal, so I'm running out of recipes. Gotta break out the big green egg, time to, I think I'll smoke a turkey this weekend out there. Uh, anyways, I hope everybody's doing well, and, uh, thank you for joining us, and, um, actually had a very stressful day as the chair of the Eastern Planning Board, but, uh, I'll, I'll share more of that at our next meeting, and we need to, we need to strategize on a few things, but I, I have to get our thoughts together, my thoughts together. Um, and, um, you know, I would like to get back to, um, this, the zoning, um, you know, within two or three meetings, I think we were close, so I think we could just, um, drive it and, and, and get it home, so maybe we'll reach out to the citizens group, see if they wanna, you know, participate, and, uh, just so it doesn't stagnate hanging out there. Um, and, uh, cause then we can move on to, we can move on, maybe start working on our rules and regs, some of the things we've talked about for a while, in, in some of the holes in the bylaw, you know, take, take advantage of our, of our downtime, a little bit of downtime, I think. Getting, we'll see a lot of interest in some projects, and, and then wondering, you know, what are we, are we gonna have to change some zoning? Um, when we change zoning, come out, coming out of this, it's certainly gonna be a different world a year or two from now, so. Anyways.
Yes, it is.
Um, so, stay safe, everybody.
A boat.
Huh?
Oh, well, now he's back.
Oh, yeah. Windows does that, I've noticed, in this background, has that strange green screen effect.
Yeah, this is a, this is a boat I used in Florida when I was there.
Um, well, I'll leave it as old faithful.
Oh, yeah, you can zoom in on that, nice.
An oldie but a goodie. I did that at our last meeting, or two meetings ago, and I had a very, I had a very, uh, important client the next morning, and I forgot to change it. Whoops, but anyways, all right, uh, let's stay safe, Easton, and, uh, who wants to bring us home here?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Strange eye.
Anderson eye.
Stetson eye.
Val Sarah guy.